Thank you for coming to our meeting this morning at the Board of Commissioners' office. We're so excited to have you. Today is Tuesday, June 10th. And at this point, we'll call the meeting to order. And we will start the morning with our invocation and pledge from Pastor Kurt Hazel at Agape Fellowship. Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Hazel.
Hazel, okay, very good. Nice to have you today.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this wonderful day that you blessed us to see, Lord. We thank you for bringing us here safely. We thank you by faith for those who are on their way that they'll get here safely without accident or incident as well, Lord. And God, I pray that everything that is discussed in this meeting, Lord, will be for the betterment, Lord, of every Rockdale County citizen. I thank you, Lord, for the Board of Commissioners. I pray that you'll continue to endow them with wisdom and understanding as they seek justice and equity for everyone in this county. And I pray that they will so do it, Lord, that there will be an example to surround in counties, Lord, and everyone beyond. Lord, I just give you praise, glory, and honor for all that will take place today. And I pray that when this meeting comes to a close, that we'll continue our day to give you glory and honor, and that you'll be pleased with all that we do. These things we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we have special recognitions and presentations. And out of respect, I would like to invite Judge Washington to start that off for us.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Members of the Rockdale public, my name is Gary Washington, and I have the honor of serving as the Chief Judge for Rockdale County Probate Court. I'm here this morning to share a brief update on the Rockdale County Probate Court 2025 Summer Law Internship Program and to introduce this year's intern. This internship is part of a statewide initiative coordinated by the Council of Probate Court Judges of Georgia Training Council. And it is under the leadership of Judge Kenya Johnson, who is a Chief Judge of the Fulton County Probate Court. Here in Rockdale County, we are very proud to participate in this very important program. It offers aspiring law students meaningful exposure to public service and the critical work of Georgia probate courts. Our intern, Ms. Jala Hill, will serve with us from June 9th through July 25th. And during those six weeks, she will engage in a robust curriculum that includes legal research and writing, drafting proposed orders, observing court proceedings, and gaining hands-on experience in the areas of estate, guardianship, and other probate matters. Her time with us will also include special field experiences, such as networking opportunities with judges and attorneys, and a special visit to the Supreme Court of Georgia, where the interns will participate in a mock trial. The goal of this initiative is to inspire and inform the next generation of legal professionals by providing early and substantive exposure to the judiciary and public service law. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Jala Hill, who will share a few words about herself and her goals for the summer. Ms. Hill?
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chief, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Williams. My name is Jala Hill. I am a third-year law student at Atlanta's John Marshall Law School. I am originally from Orangeburg, South Carolina, and I attended Furman University for undergrad. I was interested in this internship this summer because I took wills, trusts, and estates this past semester at my school. And I was really interested in the topic. So this summer, I really want to hone in and strengthen my critical thinking skills and my writing skills, as those are crucial to the legal profession. So I would like to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners, the community, and the probate court for this opportunity. And I'm really excited to work here this summer.
Well, we're really excited to have you as part of the Rockdale team. Judge Washington, while you're here, maybe the both of you could share in telling the community more about what your office does.
Sure. We're the Rockdale County Probate Court. And the short answer is, we do a lot of things that the other courts don't do. We handle estates, vote where there's a will and where there's no will.
Can you step to the mic? Thank you.
We handle estate matters where there's a will or there's no will. And we oversee the administration of the estate once a personal representative is appointed, making sure that they're operating in compliance with the law or the dictates of the will. We also oversee guardianships and conservatorships, either for minors who parents are unavailable for one reason or another and need a guardian, or if a minor has come into a large sum of money, as well as guardianships and conservatorships for incapacitated adults as well. We issue marriage licenses and certificates, something I do want to bring to the attention of the public as we embark upon the summer. And there are a lot of holidays associated with fireworks. If you're going to be doing a firework or a public display, you do need to get a permit through our court, the probate court. So we do that in so many other functions, birth certificates, death certificates. Like I said, just about anything that the other courts don't do, the probate court is kind of the catch-all.
Okay, well, very good. Thank you, and we're glad to have you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, at this time, we're going to have a presentation by interim CFO, Sue Sanders.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Your Commissioners, you have a copy before you as well. It's a little bit hard to see on the screen, but what you see before you is April Budget to Actual Report. All budgets should have 66.67% remaining. Overall, we are trending well with 72.37% remaining of the general fund, which is about 7% ahead of where we should be ending the month of April. Departments in blue are trending slightly above, but there are no concerns at this time. Mainly, they are quarterly payments involved in those departments. The departments that are highlighted in green that you'll see, they have actually spent less year-to-date in 2025 than they did in 2024 for the same time period. So those departments are Board of Commissioners, Elections, Public Relations, Public Defender, Animal Services, EMA, Planning and Development, and Cooperative Extension.
Excellent.
Yes, the enterprise budgets are also trending well, and they are 15% ahead of the ideal remaining percentage. Finance continues to monitor the budgets closely as we proceed throughout the year. So we're looking well overall. Very good.
Very good. Thank you. All right, and now we have a presentation by Director Brian Kelly from our Transportation Department regarding Safe Streets for All.
Good morning, Madam Commissioners.
Morning.
I was wanting to come and speak to you guys today about a very important grant that we received. We coordinated with ARC, the Atlanta Research Commission, on this project here. This takes a look at the safety of our roads, looks at any options to improve infrastructure, signals, lights. And so we had one of our experts help us with that, with that grant and getting the action plan put together. So before you today, you'll see the results of that study and that information, and the options that we'll be looking at for the future of Rockdale. So with that, I'll turn over to Mr. ...
Thank you.
Good morning, Chris Keller with Dennis. I'm just going to give you guys kind of a brief overview of the Safe Streets for All, Rockdale County, which is the comprehensive safety action plan for the county. Just the next slide you can go through. I will say, one of the key goals and really kind of the primary goal of this safety action plan is to identify strategies, projects. Really, it's an initiative to reduce and ultimately eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes from the transportation system in the county. So when we start that, we kind of want to know where we're at. So in general, on average, there's a little under 5,000 crashes every year that occur within Rockdale County.
The timing.
It's just a dump truck. But of those, and this is the ones that we've really kind of wanted to highlight. And while the numbers might not be super high, if you look at some of your neighbors and stuff, our goal is zero, so anything over that is too much in the eyes of this program. But on average, there's about 14 crashes every year that result in a death, and about 85 that result in a serious injury. And those serious injuries often have lifelong impacts to people's ability to continue on afterwards. Next slide. So what is SS4A, or the Safe Streets for All? It's really from the bipartisan infrastructure law, established what is called Safe Streets and Roads for All, which is a national initiative, set a national goal to eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes from the nation's transportation system. Through US DOT and the Federal Highway Administration, they established a grant program. Initial funding for that was over five years. They funded it with $5 billion to do planning projects like this one here. And then the big part is for actual implementation, so to actually go build stuff. For the longest time, we talked about, you know, this type of work and wanting to do this, but there was never any money to actually go do it. It was like, go scrape what you have to go try to do these safety improvements. Really, the first time at a national level that they put money out there to go do this. Key point, one of the pre-recs for getting that implementation money to go build stuff is to have a safety action plan, which is why that was included as part of this grant, too. They were not like, hey, you guys go foot the bill for do that on your own. We'll help you pay for that. Next slide. So a key thing as part of the Safe Streets for All and within this action plan, something that has been around for a while, but really within the past few years, US DOT adopted, is the Safe Systems Approach. We go on, I could talk about this for half an hour, but I won't. But the key difference here with the Safe Systems Approach, it is proactive, but it really is geared towards reducing those severe crashes, severe events. Big thing here is in the note from a traditional safety approach, where traditionally, we've looked at trying to eliminate all crashes. The Safe Systems Approach is really a crash severity reduction approach. It's saying crashes are okay, crashes will happen. It's acknowledging that crashes are going to continue to happen because people make mistakes. There's not a perfect driver. There's not a perfect walker out there. But how do we create a transportation system that's forgiving? And that doesn't, you know, when people do make mistakes, it doesn't result in them dying or being seriously injured. So that's kind of the big key difference. Next slide. So getting into looking at Rockdale County and the crashes within it. We looked at a lot of different things, slice and dice the crash data. We pulled a five-year, five-years' worth of crash data to look at this. But some of the key highlights and factors and trends and things that we noticed. One being kind of nighttime crashes, so dark conditions, that's with roadway lighting or without roadway lighting, but crashes that happen at night. Overall, we see about 27% of all crashes occur at night, which pretty much in general, like is the kind of rule that about 30% of your traffic happens at night, 70% during the day. But when we look at those more severe crashes, we're seeing 42% of our serious injury crashes, and nearly half of our fatal crashes are occurring during these nighttime conditions. A lot of reasons why that could happen, but something to note. One other one that was really kind of unique and stood out to us with Rockdale County was single-vehicle crashes. So crashes that someone has left the roadway, departed their lane, either hit a fixed object, a tree, a guardrail, rolled over. See those in about 17% of all the crashes in Rockdale County. But when we start to look at those severe ones, we've got 52% of the fatal crashes were single-vehicle. So they were vehicle hitting a vehicle, but somehow losing control and leaving the roadway. Another key group to look at were vulnerable road users. So these are pedestrians, bicyclists, motorcyclists, anyone that doesn't have the physical protection of a motor vehicle around them. Looking at about 20% of these serious injury crashes, 31% of the fatal crashes. And you compare that to just 2% of the total crashes. So makes sense, they're more vulnerable, hence the name, to those serious injuries. Next slide. Some other things, some different roadway features that we wanted to kind of highlight in here. One, we know that speed is probably the biggest determinant in the severity or the potential severity in a crash, just physics of it. So there's more energy, the higher speed, more energy is exchanged. But we looked at roadways based off the posted speed limit. So looking at roadways within Rockdale County with the posted speed limit at 45 to 55 miles per hour, we saw that 71% of the serious injury crashes occurred along these roadways. 78% of the fatal crashes occurred on these roadways, and then compared to 58%. So it's higher, still a lot. These are often the roads that carry the most traffic. They're big, they're fast-moving. But it's to note that the importance of speed and what that plays into the outcome of crash events when they do happen. We looked at different things by functional class. A lot of roadways are classified. Arterials are up there, those are those big, fast ones. But also wanted to note that nearly a quarter of your serious injury crashes and fatal crashes are occurring on collector roadways. Those are not your neighborhood streets, but those roads in between. We often see there's a lot of opportunity to go do stuff on those roads because they're not carrying your most amount of traffic. You can kind of get creative and flexible within those. And then added this one to really kind of point out the importance of collaboration and working together with the different partner agencies that 57% of the, I should note it on the other side in here, we've used the acronym KSI, it's Killed Seriously Injured Crashes. But 57% of those happen on state-maintained roadways. Not putting blame, but that's the importance of working with GDOT. If the goal is to ultimately, not just on Rockdale County roads to get it to zero, but within Rockdale County to get it to zero, the importance of working with GDOT on there. You can see the rest on there. So next slide. So we looked at factors, we looked at trends, we looked at different types of crashes, looked at different things. But then we also wanted to look at where are these crashes happening? And to kind of help us focus in on where are the locations that have the most fatal and serious injury crashes. So to do that, one of the things we developed was a High Injury Network. This network took out those state-maintained roadways because otherwise, they would kind of be the bulk of it. We really wanted to focus on what can Rockdale County look at, and what are those roadways? So we identified 20. There's just 10 listed on that. The top 10 are listed there. But 20 roadway segments of those, they represent about half of the fatal and serious injury crashes in all of the county occurred on those.
Can you read those for us real quickly?
Yeah, I don't have the, well, yeah. So the top 10 streets, and I don't have the extents here, but are Old Salem Road, Flat Shoals Road, Pleasant Hill Road, Honey Creek Road, Irwin Bridge Road, Ebenezer Road, Fairview Road, McDaniel Mill Road, Sigmund Road, and then North Salem Road, and then goes into Sigmund Road as well. I can look up.
And I appreciate that. I'm sure people that are watching from home want to know that information as well. And I know that Item 2025-279 is on our agenda today, so they can also listen at that point, too, for more conversation about it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next slide. So in addition to just looking at crashes and analyzing what's going on, or what has happened, a big part, and I think I failed to mention earlier, a big part of the Safe Systems Approach is recognizing that we all share responsibility for safety. It's not just you guys as elected officials. It's not just Brian and his staff. But it's the, not just law enforcement, but it's the public. We all owe it to each other to travel safely. To help get that message out, help spread the word of what we're doing, get input, try to understand what people's issues are, what their concerns are. We did a bunch of public outreach and engagement as part of this effort. A lot of different public events, online surveys. We had committee meetings with the SPOS, met with partner agencies, including GDOT, law enforcement, fire, EMS. But then kind of there are key ones, and it really aligned with kind of the crash analysis. And here, some of the key concerns people had were speeding and aggressive driving, pedestrian and bicycle safety, concerns over just general roadway conditions, lack of lighting, and then distracted driving. Those we heard over and over and over again from the public, and how do we address this? Next slide. So moving into, okay, here's the data, took the public. What does it tell us? How do we start to put together an actual actionable plan? It's called an action plan. It's not just here what the problems are, but how do we fix it? To help with that, we developed kind of four priority focus areas listed in the plan. Those include addressing speed management, so how do we create roadways with, you know, more survivable speeds? Addressing those single-vehicle, those runoff road, lane departure crashes. Addressing vulnerable road users, so walk-bike safety, you know, motorcyclist awareness. And then addressing things like roadway lighting. How do we, you know, light up our roadways and address those nighttime crashes? Excellent. So those were the focus areas, but in addition to that, we took a key from the Safe Systems Approach, where they identify five different elements. And we created a long list, much more than what's shown on here, of actionable strategies. A lot of those are program or policy-type of strategies, but all under the categories of safe road users, which includes things like education efforts, safe speeds, which can include like conducting speed studies, getting speed data, analyzing speed data, installing speed feedback signs, safe roads, which are kind of quick-build projects, reconstructing projects, doing road safety audits, safety assessments, safe vehicles, this is one where you don't think, how can Rockdale County really influence vehicles? But a lot of the new vehicle technology really picks up on pavement markings, so ensuring your signage has good reflectivity, your pavement markings are in good condition, so that they can pick up on that. And then post-crash care. We know that every second after a crash is important to the survivability of that crash. So working with the local law enforcement, first responders, fire EMS, and getting things in there. One of the things in talking to them was, how can we expand or introduce like signal preemption? So that they can push a button, they can get a green light, they can extend the green light so that they can get to a crash scene faster. And then on the reverse, to get them to medical care faster on both ends of that. Excellent. Another thing that we did, so we took that High Injury Network. So those are kind of your program, policy, longer-term strategies, go do this type of stuff. But we wanted to take the High Injury Network, we screened them, tried to figure out what's really going on on those crashes, and developed a list of projects or proposed improvements for those. There's a lot of detail in those. This is just kind of a high-level summary. But looking at things like, you know, where can pavement, signal markings, where can maybe some intersection enhancements, roadway lighting, a lot of different categories, sidewalk gaps, addressing some of those. So developed recommendations, suggestions for improvement, and then also some cost estimates to go along with that. Excellent. And this is just the example of what, you know, one of those, you know, different type of improvements. There's things called crash reduction factors, which are documented study, like how many crashes would you expect to reduce? We applied, what would that be? What is the expected result of those? And for each of those 20 segments, developed kind of gut sheets of projects and planning level cost estimates for those. Excellent. Then we can just go to the next. All right, so we have a plan, we have identified issues, we identified strategies and actions, potential projects. How do we actually go and implement it? And we kind of laid out a couple of different steps. One is go do what we know works. Plan identified in Federal Highway Administration has what they call their proven best-practice safety measures, countermeasures. These include things like what we just talked about, roadway lighting, signage, pavement markings. A lot of the things in our corridor screenings, identified stuff like that. So go certain, you know, what you haven't done, go implement those type of things. Address those priority actions, look at things like speed management, vulnerable road users, roadway lighting. Another key thing in implementing the plan is not just going to do it, but documenting what you do. Report on how many improvements you have. Be transparent. So a big part of SS4A and what the federal government wants to see is that transparency and that openness. This is what we're doing. This is the impact, doing things like before and after studies to really see what works, what can we, why might we need to adjust. Should say that this whole thing is really a long-term strategy. No one's expecting to get to zero overnight. It's a multi-generational type of initiative. So it's this constant evaluation. What is working? What can we change? Maybe it worked there, but it might not work at this one. So what little differences? So that continuous monitoring, that dialogue is key to really the implementation and achieving the goal. And then importantly, funding. You know, things like this plan is really kind of, like I said, is that prereq for getting SS4A, implementation, demonstration, funding, tapping into funds like through the SPOS. There's more traditional things like the Highway Safety Improvement Program, Safe Route School, working with GDOT on their roadways. They've got a quick-build program to go and do, you know, kind of low-cost, high-impact type of improvements, so working with them, really trying to get the money to actually go do stuff. We can talk about doing it, but if we don't have funds, it doesn't get done. So trying to identify some potential funding sources and what those next steps are. And then next, I think that's it. So thank you. I know it's a long plan. There's a lot in it. I could talk for forever. If you have any questions, happy to field those. If not, thank you.
Thank you. And I think our roundabouts in Rockdale are certainly a great way to help reduce those injuries. So thank you very much for sharing this information today.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
If I could, real quick. So one thing that definitely stood out is we're going to coordinate with not just GDOT, but the city of Conyers as well on this one. So that'll be, in the future, you'll see us come to you with options that really cover both agencies and cover all the citizens, so.
I love when we collaborate. Thank you very much for that. All right, at this time, we have public comment, so I'd like to invite Bob Nesbit to the microphone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Van Ness and Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Smith. I come as a friend, I come in peace, I come on behalf of Habitat for Humanity, Conyers, Rockdale. I just want the Board of Commissioners to know and the community to know that we're presently building three homes here in Rockdale County and the city of Conyers. The address is 1222, 1226, and 1230 Faith Lane. The reason I mention that is that if the weather cooperates, we're going to be framing up those houses this coming Saturday. And the business model for Habitat is that we look for volunteers from the community to come and assist and give back to the community as Habitat gives back to the community as well. So we want to extend an invitation to our Commissioners to please come out and grab a hammer or a nail and help us as we build homes for those who are in need of housing. So we do want to say that we are a corporate citizen, and we believe in giving back to the community and working with the community. And we want to do something that will benefit all who live in Rockdale County to make it a better place for all of us to live. We want to help develop people who can become productive citizens because if we help those who are in need the most, then all of us will benefit. Because when the tide comes in, every ship in harbor rises up. So we want to rise the tide for all who live in Rockdale County. Also want to introduce our board. Our vice president is Sheriff Eric J. Levitt. We have Roserun Ridgeway, who is our certified qualified loan officer, who is going through training to assist with lending funds. We have our treasurer, who is Bradford Jackson, a CPA here in Rockdale County. We also have Kai Oden, who is the finance manager for the sheriff's office, and she is our assistant treasurer. We have Angela Wiley, who is our competent person that has been trained so that when you come on the site, she's going to make sure that you have a helmet, which we will provide. You'll have goggles, which we'll provide, as well as gloves. so that no one hopefully will, will be injured and they will be well protected. And we also have Kemiya Jackson, who is the chairperson of our selection committee to find those who are in need of housing so that we can help. So we want to extend an invitation to you as commissioners and to all the community, and thank you so much for all the hard work that you do. Thank you.
And Bob, can you go over again the time, the address, and an email that somebody could email if they were interested?
Yes, I can.
Just to give you a heads up, I'm sure they don't have to reserve, but it might be nice to let, let you know.
Okay, wonderful. The first thing is, the timeframe will be from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Okay.
And the address is 1222, 1226, and 1230 Faith Lane, and that is in the city of Conyers.
Okay.
And also, we do want to provide lunch for those who come out. So if we have anyone that wants to assist us in donating or volunteering, so that we can provide food and refreshments to those who come out and volunteer, then please contact me. I am the president for Habitat, and my email address is Nesbit, N-E-S-B-I-T-T, SR, the number one, at AOL dot com. You can contact me and we'll make arrangements accordingly.
All right, thank you for your good work.
Thank you so much, we appreciate all the hard work you do.
Thank you. Okay. Before we go to the approval of the agenda, I did want to mention that I know a lot of citizens have had shared concerns with us as, as board members about clearcutting in the community for some of the lots and some of the development that's going on that was approved prior to this administration. I want to say in closing comments that I will be talking more about that, but I appreciate the efforts of our planning and development office and efforts along with our stormwater division to ensure the future of Rockdale County and make sure that our tree canopy and water tables are preserved for the future, so. Thank you. This time we have the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, and we'll move to the approval of the minutes for May 27th, 2025.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item number seven, we do not have any unfinished business, so we'll move on to item number eight, which is new business. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 263 is with Chemtrade Chemicals, US LLC. This is to rescind contract 2025-24. The contract was approved on March 11th, 2025 through the Water Resources Department for the chemical supply contract for polyaluminum chloride. And the recommendation from the Finance Department and the Procurement Division is to rescind this contract and then to reject all the bids and rebid for this chemical.
I move to rescind this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. I did want to see if you could explain for the public's benefit why we went through this process.
I can do that. Good morning again. So Finance, in meeting with Water Resources, there was a discrepancy in how the chemical was listed in the bid. So just to make it clear for everyone, including the vendors, in a fair bid, we want to rescind and we want to rebid it.
Okay, understood, thank you for the clarification. All right, at this time I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
And if it pleases the board, the next few items we could take collectively?
Yes.
All right, here we go. So item 264 is with Rochester DCCM through the Water Resources Department. This is for the Tall Oaks Sewer Main Extension. This is a pre-qualified firm in the amount of $60,230. This is for three to five weeks from notice to proceed. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 265 is with Burnett Lime Company through the Water Resources Department for Cal Flow Lime Slurry. This is change order number one to contract 2023-67. It's at .083 per pound. The previous amount was .076 per liquid pound, which is a total estimated amount of $91,632 per year. This is for two years through July 1st, 2027. This is Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 266 is with Kevin Price General Contractors through the General Services Department for Fire Station Number 10 Construction. This is change order number one to contract 2023-51. It's to deduct $40,122.68, which is a cost savings. The previous amount was $3,654,000. This is SPOS-funded and is a budgeted item. Item 267 is with Face &amp; Sons LLC through the General Services Department. This is for on-demand unit price for electrical services for various locations. It's one of two recommended awardees, is for one year with option to renew two additional one-year periods. It's through the General Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 268 is with Electrical Contractor Incorporated through the General Services Department of on-demand unit price electrical services for various locations. This is two of two recommended awardees, is for one year with option to renew two additional one-year periods. This is through the General Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 269 is with United Power and Battery through the Emergency Management Agency Department. This is for UPS Maintenance and Emergency Service, Emergency Services through Libert Infinity. The amount is $2,888, $80 per year. The total is $14,400 for five years. It's through the Emergency 911 Tower Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 270 is with Henry County E911 Communications through the Emergency Management Agency Department. This is a memorandum of understanding for the provision of backup 911 services between Henry County and Rockdale County. This is at no cost and is for five years. The period is April 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2030. And there's also an adjoining resolution in conjunction with the above memorandum of understanding. This is authorizing the board to execute the above-mentioned MOU for the provision of the backup 911 services between Henry and Rockdale County. And item 271 is with Georgia Power Company through Transportation Department. This is for the utility relocation agreement for the Curtisy Parkway Extension from Old Covington Highway to Flat Shoals Road. The amount is $104,541. This is for three months. This is SPOS-funded and is a budgeted item. So if we could take those items together before we move to the next one.
That would be great, and I do have one clarification. On item 264, can we talk about, it's the, for the Water Enterprise Fund, but can we talk about the investment we're making in that, and why? Thank you Deputy Director Davis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, Commissioners. Actually, this is what engineers put in place, and what are we going, using to assist us with the extension of the sewer main. It's going to help out with the support of the design and the easement acquisition. Because we have to purchase land to even put that sewer across, and that's what this is for.
Okay, and I think it will allow the Tall Oaks Pump Station to also be taken out of service, avoiding having to replace the pump.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
So I move to approve these contracts and the MOU with Henry County as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item 272 is with Planning and Development Department. This is a request for an applicant, Timothy Glenn, for an exception to the moratorium. The location is 3601 Highway 212 Southwest, Conyers. And Director LaShawn Gardner will be here this morning to present the request for this applicant to be exempt from the current moratorium.
Good morning, Commissioners. The applicant is stated in the agenda is requesting to be exempt from our current moratorium. The purpose that he's asking for the exemption is to actually construct recreation, a recreation and vacation camp. Just to kind of give a brief summary. The site is actually zone AR, which is agricultural residential. The amount of acreage is 20 acres. The applicant is proposing to actually set up three glamping sites for short-term recreational use. Each structure would accommodate a maximum of four occupants, with a total occupancy of 12 guests on sites and one vehicle per site. There is an existing 20-foot driveway that would be able to accommodate emergency vehicles. A little bit of the history. Mr. Tuma's application was submitted on April 15th, which was after our March 14th effective date of the moratorium. He was informed of all about this moratorium, and he proceeded to wanting to basically submit for a conditional or special use permit. Based on the information that we received with his application for this request, staff recommended denial on his app, for the application due to the fact that what he's trying to accomplish and do, he would qualify as a residential structure that would provide living and, or habitable accommodations.
Okay.
That's it.
So let me ask you in consideration for this. So when I look at this, I see this as a business use, so it would fall under a short-term rental, in my opinion? So what he's asking would be, he would be required to get a business license and go through the short-term rental process? Is that what we would have in mind for him?
That would be a part of the process. Looking at what he's actually trying to do, as you know, although we did approve the short-term rental piece a couple of months ago, staff is still in the process of trying to put a lot of those processes in place in terms of the necessary requirements. And staff has also seen where we may actually have to come back and do some amendments to what was approved.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I might wait in just for just a moment. The request from the applicant is actually to rezone the property from single-family residential to a medium-density residential. I believe to answer your question, if he was requesting to go from residential to, say, commercial, we might be looking at this differently. But I think it's the request that he's staying in that residential, let's just say, area, that the exemption to the moratorium is questionable, because the moratorium is to put a pause on residential right now.
So let me ask you this, why is he even asking for a different zoning? If you're only using three glamping sites?
Well, the information we received is he's, it's already zone AR. With AR, it is a conditional or special use with supplemental standards.
And also, I'm sorry, I was going to say the applicant is also here, and I believe Director Gardner, he has submitted a, a bit of a, not, not a presentation, but you had some kind of justification as required when you submit the appeal, so maybe you might want to hear from him.
Okay, and we'll do that in just, just a second, okay. All right, very good. All right, so it's more than just... Okay, I understand, all right. So... Do you have any more questions, Director Gardner, right now?
No, not for that right now.
Okay.
So, so the pictures show a lake, is there a lake on the property?
Yes, there is a lake on the property based on the areas that we have.
All right, and are these glamping units, are they, they can go on AR with conditional permitting, correct?
Yes, and as long as, you know, the applicant would follow all of the supplemental standards as well for the current UDL.
So is he, is the plan to put them out on short-term rental websites?
That would be a question, the applicant may be best answered.
So let's hear from the applicant if we can, so. Good morning.
Good morning ma'am, thank you.
Hi. All right, we do have a couple of questions for you.
Micphone up, please.
Sure, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. So welcome, glad to have you today. So we understand that your request that we have before us is that you were trying to change the zoning of the land.
Not really, we're not changing the zoning. Just a little bit of history, I'm the engineer, I'm representing Mr. Timothy Glenn, and then Mr. Tuma with the engineers. He has a 20-acre property, and we went to the planning and commissioning office, and we sat down with them, we told them that we're trying to add, it's really just adding decks, wooden decks, three of those wooden decks, and then you have a temporary dome on top of it. And the main entrance will be expanded for emergency vehicles. It is not doing any residential development, it's not changing any zoning. We were advised by the planning and commissioning, the planning office, that the best use would be to apply for a conditional use permit. So we, because the, based on our meetings with them, we said we want to follow what process, the best process, so we advised to follow the conditional use. And so we went about developing everything for the conditional use, including the plans we have in front of you. And when we brought it over to submit, that's when the moratorium has, has kicked in. So we're not really, we're not really changing the zoning, it's going to be the same zoning, we're just going to have a conditional use.
But you filed out the application, right?
Everything is filled out and submitted already.
But you asked for medium-density.
Pardon?
You asked for medium-density residential.
So it might help to state that if you apply for a special use permit, that's changing the use of the land. And that's what you've applied for, conditional use. Which the conditional use would be residential. Does that help?
Right.
Okay.
But on this application...
It says the future land use is medium-density, and the current zoning is AR. And so the applicant has requested a special use permit, which would be a conditional use change to the land. Yes.
But the land would stay zoned agricultural.
Right, but you have to go through the public hearing process in which to obtain a special use permit, which would in turn change the use of the land, which would be residential, correct?
So has this been through the public hearing process?
The question before you today is whether or not he is exempt from the moratorium. So the board has to decide under the appeal provision of the moratorium whether or not this applicant can proceed to go through the public hearing process, or if he must abide by the terms of the moratorium and wait till it's been lifted.
All right, and let me clarify, so the intent for the moratorium was really to pause construction of new...
And permitting and developing and that kind of thing.
Permanent structures, in essence.
Maybe, so the appeal provision in there, this one is a little different, I will say that. It's not a subdivision, it's not that kind of thing. But it is residential, so it gets caught in the moratorium, because if this were to be approved during the public hearing process, you do have residential units, I guess, being built. So that's what the board has to decide, whether or not. It doesn't mean it would be approved, it just means that if you say yes today, it can go through the public hearing process. That's, that's the decision.
Just to add more information, the 20 acres property, and we're putting three wooden decks in the property. We're not changing the, we're making sure it stays natural, it's beautiful, we're not cutting trees down. It is a tree farm, it is, it is, his goal is to keep it as, as natural as possible. Actually, that is a glamping site, it's for nature lovers to go to. So there's really nothing that he's really doing in there, like residential development, you know, cutting down. And it's really just trails in these three areas for glamping, that's what it is.
All right, and I do want to remind the public that this is, we, months ago, combined our work session and our meeting schedules so that we can have open discussion and dialogue with the public for these exact kind of things. with, um, the public for these exact kind of things. So, um, all right. Very good. Thank you. And, um, Director Gardner, if you could just answer a question for me regarding, um, the thought process of the staff and, um, maybe your thoughts as far as making an exemption?
Um, well, as I stated in the, in my presentation, uh, staff recommended denial for this, um, request. Um, just looking at it, um, it's 20 acres, so right now he's actually asking for three structures at this time. But then also we need to consider if he comes back and asks for additional structures. Um, that could be at a later date. It could be after the moratorium, but that's what's also something that we consider as well.
And is, in my mind, these seem different than a residential home being built. Right now, if I wanted to build a house on my own property, could I do that under the moratorium?
On your own property?
Mm-hmm.
Um, at this point, if it's new construction, no, being a residential.
Why did I think we had to carve out, like, for individuals to build their own home?
Uh, we have an appeal process. We have this. So, and if you're already in the process, if you've already, uh, submitted your LDP or a permit or your application, so maybe like that.
And that's actually what we've been doing, um, just based on legal advice that we received. Um, because of the, the, um, moratorium, we had to seek some more clarity on that. And so we were, um, advised that if your information was in the pipe before the effective date...
Right.
Then you were okay. But anything you knew, then we would not be able to accept it.
Unless you appealed for individual homes.
Unless you went through the appeal.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
And what is the, well, the board?
Madam Chair, I move to deny this request as presented.
Okay.
I'd like to sit and go through the public hearing process.
I think I would, too.
Okay. Do you want to restate a motion?
I move to approve this request.
I'm going to second that motion. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. The motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. So item 273 is the appointment of the Director of Parks and Recreation, Christine Carney. The effective date is June 21st, 2025.
I move to approve this appointment as requested.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Great. Would you like me to take the next few collectively?
Yes.
Okay. So item 274 is a requisition with the Water Resources Department for Delta Municipal Supply Neptune T-10 meter E-coders and Neptune NAS MIU activation for the Radio Read Program. The amount is $60,892. This is SPLAS-funded and is a budgeted item. Item 275 is with the Atlanta Regional Commission through the Parks and Recreation Senior Services Division for Transportation Voucher Program. The amount is $45,556.99 in grant funds, $11,389.25 in matching funds from the General Fund, for a total of $56,946.24. This is a budgeted item. Item 276 is with GMA Homeland Security, the Emergency Management Agency Department. This is for Emergency Management Performance Grant Fiscal Year 2024 for FEMA-approved equipment and supplies for local disaster responses and preparedness education. The amount is $25,565.65 in grant funds, $25,565.65 in matching funds from the General Fund, for a total of $51,130. This is a budgeted item. Item 277 is a budget amendment through the Fire Rescue Department for the General Fund. The amount is $11,254 transferred to host to purchase capital items, which is a drone. Item 278 is with GMA Homeland Security through Fire Rescue Department for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for $50,000 W fixed generator project at fire station number four. The total cost is $53,250, with a federal share of $39,937.50, a state share of $5,325, and a local share of $7,987.50, and this is a budgeted item. Item 279 is a resolution to adopt the Rockdale County Safe Streets and Roads for All Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. And item 280 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Russell Hatcher Electric, Incorporated, for the MCC3 feed wire replacement to replace service conductors to process building, to process the building at the water treatment plant. The amount is $16,360, and this is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the requisitions, grants, and amendments that have been presented before us.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. And we will now move into board comments.
All right. Yes, thank you, ma'am. Um, we have been in the commission for six months. This is our six-month mark, um, mark, and it has been great. Um, I have the privilege, the privilege of hosting Congressman David Scott's office here every Friday for constituent services, and they are at the library from 10 to 12, and they have been here, uh, for about a month now. So if you have any concerns that you want to present, you have any questions rather, um, about Medicaid, social security, or anything like that, you have direct access to Congressman David Scott's office at the library. It's on the upper level. You go towards the left side of the, the information desk, and he's in the room on the right. Uh, my KCRB is off and running. We had very productive meeting yesterday. Uh, we usually have those on the third Mondays at CE Steel at 6:00 PM. Uh, we have a lot of things that we have planned coming up and different events that the community can participate in. So we will be coming to a neighborhood near you very soon. Um, also, um, just a reminder that, um, we have the Public Service Commission. Early voting is going on now until Friday, and the actual primary voting day is on June 17th, which should be next Tuesday. And I would like to leave you all with this, that what happens is not as important as how you react to what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So we've, um, been through, May has been a health month. Yesterday, we had our, uh, annual board meeting for Viewpoint Health. Um, I am the chair of that board, and I wanted to share a couple of things that, that have happened, that happened during May and the beginning of June. First off, they partnered with the AKA sorority to, um, host a, uh, public forum called Ignite Your Future. It was directed towards people who have lost their, have recently lost their jobs or, um, and so Viewpoint Health presented on the topic Rising After the Fall: Coping, Healing, and Thriving. And they wa, focused on mental wellbeing and the grief process. So it, they, they had more attendees than they expected, many of whom had been recently laid off, and several who were laid off unexpectedly due to federal cuts. She, she mentioned yesterday, that Jennifer Hibbert mentioned yesterday that, you know, that, that there was quite a process of, of going through this grieving process and the, you know, the instability that these people were feeling. Um, and, and it, notably, it wasn't just the people who lost their jobs, but it was their colleagues who may still have their job but are concerned that they may lose their job. And so, um, I thought that was particularly interesting. I have a brother-in-law that works at the Pentagon, and he said that it's in disarray because nobody knows what's going to happen next.
Right.
And so, um, you know, that creates a mental anguish for people. So I was pleased that they had presented on that topic of how to cope with this and heal and move on and thrive. Um, the other thing that they, that Viewpoint Health helped to sponsor this year was the National Co-Responder Conference that was held in Atlanta, um, June 2nd through 4th. And the director, um, of, of this, uh, mental health center in Kansas said, "This reminds us that real progress happens when we are united in purpose and grounded in partnership. With the rising demand for effective responses to behavioral health crises, first responders and behavioral health professionals must work side by side to meet the unique needs of the individuals and families we serve." And then Jennifer Hibbert, who is the CEO at Viewpoint Health, said, "It puts behavioral health clinicians on the front lines alongside law enforcement to appropriately redirect individuals who need mental health services into care rather than incarceration." So, um, I, I was really interested in that. That's, of course, the thing I've been working on for 10 years, is getting people into treatment instead of into having, to having to serve time in jail if, if they're not a violent offender, if it's a misdemeanor level, that kind of thing. So those are my comments.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, well, we have been very busy over the last couple of weeks, and, um, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with my colleagues. I do want to say that Commissioner Smith and myself did go to Washington DC last Monday and, um, were there for a couple of days, and, um, I was able to go to Capitol Hill and meet with staff members from Senator Osop's office, also, uh, Senator Warnock, as well as meet with, uh, Representative David Scott. And so we were able to go with, um, and meet with them and talk about opportunities for Rockdale and just clarify the grants that we had applied for and interest for our community and advocate for people here at home. We also, um, I was able to go with our federal lobbyist, Patty Daly, and also, uh, meet Doug Collins and several other notable people that can, uh, definitely help support the things that we're trying to reach as goals here in Rockdale County. I did want to mention, uh, that Commissioner Smith also was able to attend a White House briefing, um, with the ACCG, and so I'm sure that you learned a lot. I don't know if you have comments about that?
I do, actually. Um, I was able to speak with the, I think it's the Secretary of EPA in reference to our water, um, and to find out if we have any grants, if they have any better funding and looking for something when we, to help our constituents as a result of an incident that we had in September. So we were able to talk about that, and we were connecting in order to see what they can do federally for us for that.
Yeah. And I know that we're all three committed to continuing to work with our federal legislators as well as our state legislators to make sure that, um, we do our very best job representing the needs of people in our community. I will say that I have, um, spoken to numerous people who, similar to what you were talking about, Dr. Williams, who, um, are really having some hard times with job loss, um, you know, rent mortgages due. And so I do want to say, um, in that vein, that this board is really working and with our directors and leaders in the community to make sure that we are as efficient as possible with the budget and to hopefully have cost savings from what they paid last year. And, um, we are very concerned about making sure that we do our best for our seniors as well, who are really struggling on a fixed income, many of them. So we hear that need, and we are responding, um, to the best of our ability, so. Uh, I did want to mention, um, that Sharon Webb, our Director of EMA, Sharon, can you come aboard for just a minute and talk about our sirens and where we stand on that?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Um, so the weather sirens, there's been a long process coming. Um, we have nine throughout the county, and due to some connectivity, once they came in, they were supposed to be on radio, radio frequencies. Well, some on the north side had environmental issues due to trees, and so we had to revamp and go with a cellular way of option of connecting them all. So for the past, I guess, two months, American Signaling, who was our, um, vendor, as well as Verizon and Technical Services, has been in the process of trying to get these all connected. Um, I got an email last week from American Signaling. We are finally on the downhill stretch, which we're still not there, but, um, hopefully within mid-July, they will be all connected. We do have four that are actually operational, um, but come about July, they should all be servicing and operational for the whole county.
Okay. And let me clarify. You mentioned environmental issues on the north side. I don't think you really meant environmental issues.
Environmental interference, which was due to the trees. I'm sorry, yes. I don't want to say anything like that.
So I know that on the north side, just due to, uh, changing elevations, it can be a little bit more difficult. So I think what you meant was just the trees blocking the opportunities.
The trees were blocking that radio frequency for the towers to hit.
Just clarifying. Okay. Excellent. Thank you for that update. So when do we think it'll all be fixed? Just a guess?
I'm, I'm going with mid-July is what I was told from them. So unless we get something set back, that is what our goal is for right now.
Well, that's good.
How many will there be altogether?
There'll be nine total throughout the county. They're pretty much all at local parks. Um, they're all the different, because what they are used for, weather sirens are for outside use. They are to alert people, there is a danger, right then, you need to take shelter. They're not, people can hear them within their homes, but they're for outdoor use when people are at the ballparks, on the fields, um, on the trails, to let them know that there is a warning in the county to take immediate shelter.
Four of them, you said, are already...
Yes, ma'am. Four are operational.
And those are on the south side?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Quick question for you. So are they being tested right now? Because people have said they've heard them lately.
So they are tested every Saturday, every, the first Saturday, every month at 1:00 they do, are tested. Yes, so that's what they're hanging on during that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Um, and then I wanted to also talk about job opportunities at the county. I know that, uh, Director Holmes and her team has been working very hard to make sure that, um, those jobs are posted as, as soon as they are available. So I would encourage people to check out our website at rockdalecountyga.gov and, or is it .org? I'm sorry. I need...
GA.gov.
GA.gov. So rockdalecountyga.gov, um, and you will find employment opportunities and career paths there. Um, I will say that our law enforcement and first responders, so our fire department, EMA, and, um, Sheriff's Department are hiring and have opportunities, not only for people new to those fields, but also for people that are doing lateral transfers. So, um, we would love for people to check that out. Additionally, our Economic Development, um, Director Kevin Hanna, that works through with the Development Authority and CREDC is here today, and we appreciate you coming by. Um, but your website also has job postings for businesses in the community. And what is your website?
It is CREDC.GA.gov.
All right. That's C-R-E-D-C dot G-A dot gov. Okay. Very good. And then I wanted to mention that we hope in the future to work collaboratively so that we'll have a unified opportunity for citizens in the community to apply for jobs and work right here in Rockdale County near their home so they can be more engaged in their child's activities or just have, uh, quality of life opportunities, um, enjoying our recreation facility, facilities and things like that. So, um, that should be rolling out in the near future. And then I also wanted to go back to the legislation that we're working on collaboratively with Stormwater and Planning and Development about stopping clearcutting and making sure that we're saving specimen trees, because just replanting is not enough for me, and I'm sure that citizens, um, definitely were frustrated when they saw the project at Ebenezer and Highway 138, and likewise at the entrance to Weatherstone and Highway 138. So we want to do our best job making sure that we enforce the legislation already on the books, and the interpretations of those ordinances are very, very clear to the people that submit. And so we will, uh, have a renewed focus on that area to make sure that we have the best tree canopy and... have a renewed focus on that area to make sure that we have the best tree canopy and hydrology studies in place moving forward. So. And as a last and final note, our water department is an enterprise fund, the Rockdale Water and Sura Authority. But the water department is an enterprise fund, and that means that we are able to function based on ratepayers. So I know that sometimes financial challenges do happen. However, we are always going to be fair and equitable to anyone who has a financial concern. And I think that the department has always made very valid efforts to work with both businesses, nonprofits, and residents who are users of that system. And so I just want to stress that we will continue to be fair and equitable in our efforts to do business with people in the community and provide services. Okay? All right. Is there a need for executive session today?
Yes, Madam Chair. For the purpose of discussing personnel, land acquisition, and pending and threatened litigation.
I make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel, land acquisition, and pending litigation.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. That adjoins our board meeting today. I appreciate your attendance.